All right. We're starting now. Yeah. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission meeting this August 20th, 2024. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome. And just to let you know that we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we have a moment of silence, go through a little few business items, and then we also begin our meetings with presentations. Tonight, we have one presentation, which will be presented by Commissioner Beasley Pittman. So to begin the meeting, I ask you all to please rise and join Haley Nixon and Juliana Rivero at the podium with me so that we can do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you. I have a little present for you.
Thank you.
Very good. So where do you go to school?
Crescent Park.
I'm sorry?
Crescent Park.
Crescent Park? Very nice. Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And hope you can stay for part of the meeting. Want to take a picture?
Sure.
Very good. Thank you, girls. Okay, so let us begin a moment of silence. And as we have our moment, I'd like you all to keep in your prayers the passing away of Stanley Tate. Vice Mayor Glassman spoke about him this afternoon, a well-respected member of our communities. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sternman?
Here.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Here. Before we begin, I just want to announce some retirements in our community. In the month of August, we have quite a few people retiring after many, many years of service to our city. First, George Oliva, Chief Building Compliance Inspector, been with us for sixteen and a half years. Mimos Bertoni, she's been in our administrative aide in our police department. She's been with us for six years. Anthony Davis, worked in our Public Works Department, twenty-six years. Leonardo Stutz, in our Parks and Rec Department, been with us thirty-one years. Victor Pires, Police Sergeant, been with us for five years. Glenn Davis, Building Inspector, five years. Andrea Walters, who's been in Human Resources, she's been with us for twenty-eight and a half years. Jerome Pulliam, who's been in Public Works, been with us for twenty-two and a half years. And finally, Ganeus Wright, a lifeguard, part of our Parks and Recreation Department, been with us for thirty-two years. So congratulations and thank you for your service to our community. Very much appreciate it. We have a couple of change, we have a couple of agenda announcements. R5 is being removed from the agenda as per the city manager and changes in our agenda. PH2, there's a new Exhibit Three, and PH3, there's a new Exhibit Six. I believe those were emailed to us earlier. So do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved second.
They moved the seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst? Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes, and those, and the agenda and the minutes as amended are, have now been approved. So our first presentation is from Broward County Animal Care Division, and is Randy Greis here? There you are, Randy. Just, can you just, is that button? Okay, you're on. Good.
I'm on. All right. Thank you so much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I appreciate the time. Delivering some important information for everyone today. As the cost of owning a pet continues to rise, Broward County Animal Care aims to be the agency to ease the financial commitment associated with caring for your furry friends. This evening, I'm inviting the residents of Fort Lauderdale to participate in two events aimed at keeping money in your pockets. On August 21st and 23rd, that's tomorrow and Thursday, we'll be hosting a discounted microchipping and rabies clinic from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Both services are free. Residents will only have to pay for rabies tag. The clinic will be hosted at Broward County Animal Care, 2400 Southwest 42nd Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33312. And here's some more good news. On Tuesday, August 27th, we'll be in Fort Lauderdale, hosting our free wellness clinic, taking place at the Tyron Bryant Branch Library, 2230 Northwest 21 Ave, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, 33023. From 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can get your pet vaccinated and microchipped at that clinic for free. We're excited about extending this opportunity, and we hope to see all of you there. Thank you so much for your time.
Great. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. That's a great program, free microchipping.
Yes.
That's really great. You doing it for humans, too? Maybe?
I was gonna say the same thing.
Trying to find these commissioners to get them here on time, you know, it'd be great to know where they're roaming around.
The mayor's chip is expiring this week, so, thank you.
Okay, now our second presentation, I'd like to invite, invite Commissioner Beasley Pittman, who will present a proclamation regarding National Black Business Month, Commissioner. And Fred Harris? And Fred Harris, who's Chair of the Broward County Black Chamber of Commerce, if you could, please join us at the podium. Is, is Mr. Harris here? Oh, there you are. Nice suit.
Wow, I should know that, push the button, okay? Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege this afternoon to issue and, well, to present the proclamation and recognition of National Black Business Month. Whereas, established in two thousand four, National Black Business Month is celebrated annually to recognize and support black-owned businesses, entrepreneurs, and professionals for their vital contributions to economic growth, innovation, and job creation. Whereas, it is founders Frederick E. Jordan and John Williams Templeton recognize the policies changes, excuse me, recognize the policies challenges faced by two-point-six million black-owned businesses. Inspired by Jordan's difficulties in attaining funding for his own business, they set out to empower black business, business owners across the nation. Their goal was to give these entrepreneurs a strong voice in shaping the policies that directly impact their successes. And whereas, black entrepreneurship has a long history dating back to the late seventeen hundreds. Despite the challenges, black-owned businesses flourished, particularly during the early twentieth century. Organizations like the National Negro Business League played a crucial role in supporting this growth. And whereas, it is vital to highlight these accomplishments and create opportunities for further growth. The Broward County Black Chamber of Commerce, founded in two thousand seventeen, actively supports over four-hundred-and-twenty member businesses by providing resources, including access to capital, technical assistance, and workshops. And whereas, the city of Fort Lauderdale recognized the significant contributions of the Broward County Black Chamber of Commerce and the economic impact of black-owned businesses and its historic importance of black business leaders in the city. And whereas, today, approximately eleven percent of all businesses in the United States are owned by black entrepreneurs. These businesses enrich our nation's diversity, equality, and economic landscape. Now, therefore, we, as the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim August twenty-two, twenty-four as National Black Business Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale. This is dated this, the twentieth day of August, twenty-two, twenty-four. Signed by our mayor, Mayor Dean Trentalis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. This is, um, very, we are honored at the chamber to receive this from the city of Fort Lauderdale. We've been around for a number of years now, supporting minority and African-American businesses, helping to provide training, technical assistance, and coaching in order to expand the opportunities for, in the business community. And so for the city to acknowledge us and to provide, and to give us a proclamation is very encouraging. We know that the city some time ago participated in a disparity study that looked at your data to determine what your business opportunities look like for communities of color. The, the residents and the population in the city of Fort Lauderdale is right around twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent African-Americans. But when we look at the business opportunities for the city and the county, that, that number is very small. So our hope is that we can continue to partner with the city and the county to increase opportunities, not only for businesses of color, but for business in general for the small business community. So on behalf of our President, Shahihwa Jared Gellen, and our members, we'd like to thank you for this proclamation.
Great, thank you. Let's change those numbers. Let's change those numbers, right?
Yeah, we need to.
We're working on that.
And thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we, so we move on to the agenda for tonight. What happens is we take up the items that are called consent items. And those items are where we've, the commission votes on all of them all at once. Unless a member of the commission asks that we pull out one of those items, and we would discuss it and vote on it separately. If you are here for any one of those items on the consent agenda, and the commission has pulled that item, then I would ask you to please wait until we get to that item, and you'll be given the opportunity to speak. If you are here on a consent agenda item that has not been pulled, I'll give you the opportunity to speak before we vote on all the items, and you'll have three or four minutes to speak at that time. So Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items you wish to pull? Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
And Commissioner Sternman?
CR one.
CR?
CR one.
Okay.
And, uh, so Clerk, CM seven was not pulled, correct?
MM is not a consent agenda item.
No, I said CM, CM. CM was not.
CM one?
No, no, do not pull it. I just, for some reason, I made a note here, but that's not pulled, right? Okay, no, no, all I want is a CR one, that's the only one.
Okay. All right, so, um, all right, no one is asked to speak on any of the consent agenda items according to what I have here, except Mr. Lockery, but that's just for questions only, so we'll assume that you're good there. All right, so except for CR one, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and so all the consent agenda items have now been approved. If you're here on any of those, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or now that your item's been approved, now would be the time where you could leave. So CR one, Commissioner.
Oh, yes, Laura, come on up. There's two items in here, just for, for information purposes. I know there's a couple in my district I'm very proud of, I mean, very grateful for is probably a better way. Three-point-eight million dollars in Riverland Road Water Main, as well as the project in Tarpon River. I just want to touch upon them briefly.
What items? Just the letter?
CR one, the letter is, you can probably catch.
First one is B, I believe?
Yep, B, okay. And did you have a question about that?
No, no, just, just so for, for, for the, my, my district, just.
Yeah, so this is moving forward, the Riverland Road Water Main's project in the amount of three-point-eight million dollars. The description indicates that it's a replacement project.
Right, and I guess thirteen-hundred, thirteen-thousand feet is what I get. And the other one is, there was something in Tarpon River. Oh, is it, is it in the memo?
That's why I say ten o'clock.
M twelve.
M twelve?
There it is, M twelve.
So it's not in CR one?
No, no, it, it is. Oh, oh, no, that, no, no, that's coming back later on. Okay, so, no, that's the big one. That is going to be taken separately. That's the only one. Thank you very much, Laura.
Yep, absolutely.
Would you like to move the item?
Yes, so, so moved.
Okay, so that's, CR one is introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the city of Fort Lauderdale's fiscal year twenty-two-four final, final all funds budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as amended by appropriating and transferring funds as set forth in the Commission Agenda Memo twenty-four dash zero-three-two-four, amending the fis, the city of Fort Lauderdale's final fiscal year twenty-two-four through fiscal year two thousand twenty-eight, Community Investment Plan for the fiscal years beginning October one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-eight, as amended by appropriating and transferring funds as set forth in the City Commission Agenda Memo twenty-four dash zero-three-two-four, and providing for severability and effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Moving on to the motions. M one, some motion approving, we have a lot of events, so we'll try to get through these now. Motion approving an event agreement with request for music exemption and related road closure for the Three J Hospitality LLC for the Day of the Dead Celebration. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M one's now approved. M two, motion approving an event agreement with request for music exemption and related road closure on the La Solis Association, Inc., for the sixty-second, sixty-second Annual Christmas on La Solis. Do I, does someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M two's now approved. M three, motion approving an event agreement with request for music exemption and related road closure beyond ten AM on the Barrier Island for the Grand Prix Festival at La Solis Oceanside. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, M three's now approved. M four, motion approving an event agreement and related road closures with Trust Bridge Foundation for the twenty-two-four Uptown Five K on the runway. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that motion is now approved. M five, motion approving an event agreement and related road closures with Vegan Ventures LLC for the Vegan Block Party. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M five is now approved. M six, motion approving an event agreement and related road closures with National Marine Suppliers, Inc., for the Triton Expo. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M seven, motion approving an event agreement and related road closures with the Riverwalk Fort Lauderdale, Inc., for the Day of the Dead Stroll. Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M eight, motion approving event agreements and related road closures with the La Solis Association for the Thirty-seventh Annual La Solis Art Fair, October twenty-fourth, January twenty-fifth, and March twenty-five, twenty-two-five.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and those, that, those events are now approved. M nine, motion approving a second amendment to the agreement with BDO USA, a Virginia corporation authorized to conduct business to modify not to exceed amount and contract term for consulting services with a new river crossing project. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
No.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M nine is approved. M ten, motion rejecting all bids pursuant to invitation to bid number two-ninety-six dash one, and approving an agreement for the purchase of waterway cleaning and algae controls pursuant to invitation to bid number three-twenty-nine. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M ten is now approved. M eleven, motion approving a contract for the Annual Concrete and Paverstone Team Contracting, Inc. That's a two-year contract. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that motion is now approved. M twelve, motion approving an agreement for the Tarpon River A eleven Sewer Basin Rehabilitation Project Phase Two, Inliner Solutions. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now approved. M thirteen, motion approving a pay range reallocation of three Teamsters classifications. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is now approved. And the final motion, motion approving the final ranking of firms negotiated fee schedule and agreement for professional civil engineering services related to the Critical Stormwater Infrastructure Condition Assessment Program. Do I hear a motion? Been moved, moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and M fourteen is now approved. Moving on to resolutions, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, please, uh, please recite the names into the record.
Okay, for the September third resolution, Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Edward Catalano nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Jason Ross nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Martha Gutierrez Steinkamp nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And I also, in the backup, I attached the Beach Business Improvement District, the Primary and Alternate Representatives, and their names will be included on the September third resolution as well.
Okay.
And for tonight's resolution, Budget Advisory Board, Richard D. Giram, Giram Lamo, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Civil Service Board, Duane Sinclair, that's the city manager's recommendation, Community Service Boards, Services Board, Latrenza Grease nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Christie Rice nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Sharon Hughes nominated by Commissioner Beasley Pittman, Education Advisory Board, Denia Perloff nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issue Blue Ribbon Committee, John Hooper nominated by Mayor Trentalis, David Cooper nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Invest Fort Lauderdale, Inc., Board of Directors, Amanda Bartle, nominated by Vice Mayor Glassman, Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Robin Vegas nominated by Commissioner Sternman, and Sustainability Advisory Board, Suzie Belli nominated by Vice, uh, Mayor Trentalis, and that rounds it out.
Okay, are there any modifications or additions? There being none, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part here of. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and those board and committee members are now approved. I want to thank everyone for their willingness to volunteer for these assignments, and thank you for your commitment to our city. R two, resolution approving an interlocal agreement between the City of Fort Lauderdale and the Community Redevelopment Agency for certain transactions between the CRA and the city to expeditiously complete capital improvements and tax credit projects, and for the city manager to negotiate and execute any and all documents or instruments necessary or incidental to consummate the transactions. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Resolution has been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement between the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency and the City of Fort Lauderdale for funding of projects and community development activity within the boundaries of the Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Area, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. R three, a resolution ratifying a six-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar loan approved by the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency as local government- loan approved by the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency as local government area of opportunity funding to the Mount Herman Housing, LTD, and for the Mount Herman Apartments, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all instruments related to the loan and delegating authority to the city manager to take certain actions. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Resolution's been introduced. Any questions? Please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission, commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale ratifying approval of a loan of six-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars by the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency to Mount Herman Housing LTD pursuant to resolution number twenty dash zero six, authorizing the city manager to execute any and all instruments related to the loan, delegating authority to the city manager to take certain actions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, and R three is now approved. R four, this is a resolution approving agreement for the sale of potable water between the city of Fort Lauderdale and the city of Tamarack. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, authorizing the proper city officials to execute an agreement with the city of Tamarack for the sale of potable water subject to mutually agreed upon terms and conditions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, and that resolution is now approved. Um, Alan, do we, do we give them all their water?
No.
No, just some?
Like ten percent.
Small portion, okay.
Uh... And I believe that they're building their own plant, so is that correct that...
Yes, they are building their own plant, well, expanding to this area, um, and that's why this is a five-year agreement as opposed to what we typically would have done, which would have been a longer one.
Okay. Um, R five, uh, resolution declaring notice of intent to lease city-owned property located at twenty-nine twenty-five East La Solis Boulevard.
That was, that was...
Oh, that's pulled. I'm sorry. Sorry. Um, R six, resolution providing authorization for the city manager to execute data security agreements for the Information Technology Services Department. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
The resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, delegating to the city manager authority to execute, execute contracts and agreements for the sharing and safeguarding of sensitive and confidential information, technology, data, and information, and providing for severability, rescission of conflicting resolution provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, and R six is now approved. Now we move on to the public hearings. So PH one, this is a public hearing amending the Housing and Community Development twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four Annual Action Plan and the twenty-twenty, twenty-two-four Consolidated Plan. Um, uh, Tom, do I have to, uh, close, we have to close public hearing on all of these, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so Carla Roundtree has signed up to speak. Uh, Carla, are you still here? Oh, there you are. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Push the, push the, uh, button below the mic.
On the bottom. You got it.
Am I live? So you can hear me now?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Commissioner and everyone, on this public hearing on the housing and community development...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Can you hear me? All right. So when it comes to the housing and the community development, my question to you, the city commissioner, when the developers come into different neighborhoods, like, they don't have a percentage to give to affordable housing or senior citizens? I was to a meeting last night, and I didn't understand why someone said to me they didn't have to give a few, uh, like rooms or apartments for affordable housing or senior citizen. But as a resident of Fort Lauderdale and developers are coming in, you should want, I think, to make sure things are available for all the residents.
So who wants to, I mean, I can answer, but I'd rather it came from our attorneys regarding... They want, she wants to know why aren't affordable housing units set aside in, um, in housing projects? I mean, the short answer is that the state doesn't allow us to do that anymore. If we, if we compel a developer to, uh, set aside affordable housing units and, uh, where there's a market rate housing project, that we, that the city has to compensate the developer for any loss in profit that they are, uh, that they are suffering as a result of that, of that requirement. Is that correct?
Okay.
How do I look on TikTok? Are you, are you...
You know I got, you know I do. Well, you know I got you on TikTok.
All right, does that answer your question?
No, not really, but I'm gonna take what you're saying. I don't feel, as a city, about unity and community, that you're not providing, when the developers come, something for the people. You already see the homeless population going here, so you're not providing nothing affordable or for seniors. I hear what you're saying. I know developers want money, but I don't agree.
Well, I can't say we agree either, but we have to, we have to abide by the law. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing? Someone want to close public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll on closing public hearing.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, and public hearing on PH one is now closed. Um, someone like to, uh, is it a motion?
Yes.
Is it a motion or a resolution?
It's a motion.
It's a motion, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so someone like to move PH one?
So moved.
Move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, and PH one is now approved. Um, PH two, public hearing, resolution to establish minimum annual lease rates and adopt the Brokerage Commission pro, policy for property available for lease at the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport. No one has signed up to speak. Um, do I hear a motion to, uh, close public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
Been moved and seconded?
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, and public hearing on PH two is now closed. Do I hear a motion to approve, excuse me, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
The resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, establishing the minimum annual rent rates for leases of real property at the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport and adopting a brokerage commission policy for real property available for lease at the Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Just before we, uh, vote on that, I just have a, a question for clarification from Rufus. So if we could Rufus, come on up for a second? I just want to get something on the record.
Rufus, can you come up, please? Rufus is our airport director.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, uh, Rufus James, Airport Director.
Just want to get one thing on the record. So, uh, if you would just explain why we, uh, why we do these market rate studies?
So in the past, what we encountered was, uh, the CPI adjustments not keeping up with the market, and so to ensure that those rates are, uh, keeping up with, um, uh, the market, it's doing the, uh, triannual appraisal every three years to ensure that we're, uh, leasing ground, we're establishing ground leases at an appropriate rate that's within our, uh, grant assurances.
Right, so, so, and, and this is kind of where I just want to make sure we get this on the record. So are we required by the FAA to do this every three years, or is this a best practice? Is this a, a recommended practice? So just...
It's a recommended practice. It's not required by the FAA.
Okay.
But grant assurance number twenty-two, which requires us having a, um, uh, a, a scale to go by.
Right.
It would only make sense to do it every three years, and typically that's a minimum. So that rate of sixty-five cents is a minimum that would be charged.
All right, very good. Thank you, Rufus. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, um, uh, my vote is yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, and PH two is now approved. Moving on to PH three, this is a public hearing and adoption of a resolution approving the Parks, Recreation, and Beaches Advisory Board's recommendation for approval of land purchase of real property located at twenty-two oh-one Northeast Nineteenth Street as provided by the Parks and Recreation Bond Resolutions. I have, um, a couple people sign up to speak on that, but I think Ken, you're just here for it to answer questions, and, um, uh, Doug Fultcher, are you here, Doug? Did you want to speak on this or just here to support it? You're here to support it? Did you want to, yeah, but did you want to speak on it or just show that you're, you're supporting it? Okay, all right. All right, so, um...
Mayor, I have a, a point of, uh, clarification.
Before, before we go, okay, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to know, it almost seems like we should be taking PH four ahead of PH three because that's the meat and potatoes of this item, but why are we doing PH three, approving it before we get into the meat and potatoes of PH four?
That was rec, that's the Parks Board recommendation, and we're to go ahead and buy the land. Um, so the Parks Board recommendation would have come first before the actual sale, the purchase.
So we're accepting the recommendation first?
Oh, so we're accepting the recommendation.
And then, and then we're allocating the money.
Okay.
Of the Parks Board. That's just a requirement of the Parks Bond, um, that unless it's one of the signature projects, that they go there and we bring those recommendations to the commission.
No, that I understand.
Yeah.
I, I, but the meat and potatoes is in the next item.
Correct.
Which is, that's why it's strange to me that we would just say, yes, let's do this, and then discuss the item after we already said, let's, if we're gonna say, yes, let's do this, then why do we need to discuss the details?
Well, we, we, we're gonna say yes or no to do it, and if we approve it, then we're gonna approve the, the, the cost.
So what are we approving? Just the recommendation, but we might not even approve the sale?
Correct. Well, the two s-
They're two separate items, yes.
I know, it just seems a little, seems a little awkward, but that's okay. I, I hear what you're saying. It just seems kind of...
Well, they're dependent on each other.
I understand.
Okay.
But it would seem to me that the approval of the sale would be dependent upon the agreement of the sale and the details of the sale. But that's, I, I hear what you're saying. It just seems a little reversed to me.
Okay, let us move forward. Let us move forward. Okay. Um, so, uh, other than those that have signed up to speak, have, is there anyone wish to speak on this item? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to, um, introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Second. Oh, it's a resolution.
Resolution's been introduced. Um, please call the roll.
A resolution, the city commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the recommendation of the Parks, Recreation, and Beaches Advisory Board for the property acquisition located at twenty-two oh-one Northeast Nineteenth Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three-three-three-zero-five, as provided for in bond resolution number eighteen dash two-six-one, bond resolution number twenty dash zero-eight, and bond resolution number twenty-two dash two-five-nine, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trintellus?
Yes, and the recommendation's now been approved. Moving on to PH four, this is a resolution approving the purchase and sale agreement for the property located at twenty-two oh-one Northeast Nineteenth Street under the Parks Bond for an amount not to exceed one million seven hundred and forty thousand. Um, we have Doug, you've also signed up to speak here, and also Craig. Do you, do you want to speak or just, yeah, come on up. And Doug, did you still want to speak? You could, okay, well, let's see what Craig has to say first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Push, push down, down, down. See her? Yep, you're on. Put it again. Oh, there, you're on.
I'm on. Hi, everyone. I'm, uh, Greg Batesal. I'm the president of the Ball Harbor Homeowners Association. On behalf of the, uh, Ball Harbor, uh, HOA, um, we're asking, uh, you to support this, uh, 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 public hearing, number four. Um, this, uh, purchase, uh, of the land at two-two oh one Northeast Nineteenth Street has been on, uh, several commission agendas. On June, uh, twenty-sixth, we had a park, uh, commission hearing as well, where it, uh, received an approval of a super majority of votes, and, um, we had over seventy Ball Harbor and other community residents all dressed in green, some of which you see this evening. Um, and, uh, we were thrilled to have that approved, again, by a super majority, and we're looking forward uh, to working with the, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, Commission to, uh, have a park, uh, in our neighborhood and, uh, for the City of Fort Lauderdale to enjoy as well as Ball Harbor, as well as, uh, working with them to design something that's unique, uh, for Ball Harbor and, and the City of Fort Lauderdale.
Great.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Doug, you wanna speak? Do you live right next door to this? Across the street? Yeah.
Uh, my name is Doug Fultcher. I, uh, live, uh, this is twenty.
Twenty-two oh one.
And I'm twenty.
This is twenty-two oh one, you're at twenty-two hundred.
I'm twenty-two hundred, so I'm right across the street from it. I've spoken several times on this already. My concerns on the, it being a piece of commercial property as it, as it currently stands until they, uh, agree to buy it. But one thing that struck me, listening to some of the other homeowners, is that how the church has been there for decades, and while though it's, it's, it's not really what you can call, uh, open space, but it's still a big open piece of property. And now with so much of that property going to homes, the neighborhood is gonna shrink up. It's right at our front door, and having an open space, still having some open space where kids can play, um, special events or something that their neighborhood, we're losing that in the park would be really great to be able to have that, and I'd appreciate it, uh, yes, if y'all can do it. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none, would someone move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed on this item. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving the purchase and sale of real property located at twenty-two oh one Northeast Nineteenth Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three-three-three-zero-five, for an amount not to exceed one million seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, plus closing costs, delegating authority to the city manager to execute all documents or instruments related to this transaction, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Before I vote, I just wanna say thank you to everybody from Ball Harbor for your ongoing fight on behalf of getting this parcel for you. You've done great. You've really turned out. It's been almost unanimous show of support, and that helps us up here, and I appreciate it, so thank you, and, and absolutely, yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Mayor, I, I do have a question of, uh, Susan, if that's okay before I vote. Uh, thank you. And first of all, I'm very pleased with the neighborhood. I think this is terrific. I'm really happy that you're getting this park space. Uh, but when I go through the agenda items, Susan, so I noticed that we've agreed to a purchase price that's, uh, almost fifty percent above the appraised value, and that requires obviously a super majority vote. But here's my question. So, um, there's some extra costs associated here, uh, roughly forty-three thousand dollars in fees and, um, appraisal fees and also advisory fees, uh, for colliers. So does that just get added to the one point seven four million for the total of one-seven-eight-three-five, and that all comes out of the District One Land Acquisition funds from the bond?
Yes.
That's where the fees also come?
Yeah, I mean, right, you know, we initially, we charge them until a property gets purchased, and then we move it all over as part of the, the total cost of the property, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm good. No, thank you very much. Again, congratulations to the neighborhood. Uh, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and that is approved. Congratulations. Okay, moving on.
It was the green shirts that won the day.
You're not gonna stay? Okay.
I guess not.
I guess not, okay. I won't take it personally, okay. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. PH five, public hearing, quasi judicial resolution pursuant to ULDR Section forty-seven dash nineteen point three E, approving a waiver of limitations at seven hundred Southwest Fourth Place for the installation of one wooden dock and two mooring pile clusters and one floating dock and one boat lift. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Uh, Commissioner Herbst, you have any disclosures? Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
No disclosures.
I have none. Vice Mayor?
None.
Commissioner Sturman?
None.
I have none. Um, no one has signed up to speak on this?
Move to close public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Um, the Marine Advisory Board approved this, right?
Unanimously.
Eight, zero, seven. I thought, okay. Okay, um, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Well, Ty, Tyler, you're just here to answer questions right there. Keep going.
Did you say yes?
I say.
Okay, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Um, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Uh, yes, this is just a closed public hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Would someone like to introduce the resolution? Resolution's been introduced.
And that's for approval?
Yes, for approval, sorry.
All right. A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section forty-seven dash nineteen point three E of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, granting a waiver of the limitations of ULDR Section forty-seven dash nineteen point three C to per, permit Scott Eric Jordan and Erin Mary Myers, husband and wife, installation of one wooden dock, two mooring pile clusters, one floating dock, and one boat lift extending fifty-nine point eight feet plus or minus from the property line into the adjacent waters of the New River. Such property being located at seven hundred Southwest Fourth Place, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions in conflict here with and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and PH five is now approved. PH six, uh, public hearing, uh, quasi judicial resolution approving a waiver of limitations at nineteen forty-seven Northeast Twenty-First Street for the installation of one boat lift and one finger pier. Good night, Tyler. Uh, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Uh, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Um, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
None.
I have none. Vice Mayor?
None.
And Commissioner Sturman? Okay. Um, would someone like to move, oh, no one has signed up to speak. Um, would someone like to move to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Resolution's been introduced. Anyone have any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, pursuant to Section forty-seven dash nineteen point three E of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations, granting a waiver of limitations of ULDR Section forty-seven dash nineteen point three C to permit Christopher Place, a single man, and William J. Atkins, a single man, as joint tenants with the right of survivorship, installation of his finger pier and a boat lift extending thirty-nine point eleven feet plus or minus from the property line into the adjacent waters of South Fork Middle River, such property being located at nineteen forty-seven Northeast Twenty-First Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all co, uh, parts of resolutions in conflict here with and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and, uh, that resolution is now approved. Moving on to PH seven, this is a public hearing, quasi, quasi judicial ordinance approving a res, uh, rezoning from General Industrial District to the north, to Northwest Regional Activity Center, Mixed Use East. Um, this is at six forty-seven Northwest Sixth Avenue. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
None.
Uh, Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
No.
I have none.
None.
Vice Mayor, Commissioner Sturman?
None.
Okay, so, um, uh, one person signed up to speak, which is to answer questions. So does anyone wanna move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and public hearing on PH seven is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
In ordinance amending Section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale and Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from General Industrial District to Northwest Regional Activity Center, Mixed Use East District, all of Lot One, Block Three-twenty-five, progresso according to the plat, thereof, as recorded in plaque book two, page eighteen of the Public Records of Dade County, Florida, located north of Sistrung Boulevard, east of Northwest Seventh Avenue, west of Northwest Sixth Avenue, and south of Northwest Seventh Street, all said lands being in the City of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to OFR one, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending Section twenty-four dash forty-seven, solid waste charges generally and the city's code of ordinances adjusting the schedule of rates and charges for sanitation, collection, disposal, and operating costs. Um, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Yours has been introduced. Anyone have any questions? There being none, um, please call the roll.
In ordinance amending Chapter twenty-four, solid waste, Section twenty-four dash forty-seven, charges generally of the code of ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to increase the solid waste rates and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and OFR one is now approved on first reading. OFR two, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations. Um, Section forty-seven dash twelve, Central Beach Districts. Um, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Does anyone have any questions with regard to this ordinance?
Just very happy to see it moving forward. It's been something we've been asking for, for a little while, so it's great to have the extra added public participation. Thank you.
All right. Um, the order's been introduced, right? So please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending Article Two zoning district requirements, Section forty-seven dash twelve, Central Beach Districts, Article Four, Section forty-seven dash twenty-four, development permits and procedures, and Article Seven, Section forty-seven dash twenty-seven, notice procedures for public hearings to revise the public participation requirements, providing for sever, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, codification and correction of scriven errors and for an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and OFR two is now approved on first reading. Finally, OFR three, first reading an ordinance amending the classification table of the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale by amending the non-bargaining unit compensation table in Schedule Six, providing for three percent general wage increase effective October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and creating a new classification. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced. Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the pay plan of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, by amending the non-bargaining unit compensation table in Schedule Six, special employees providing a three percent general wage increase to all non-bargaining unit employees and all Schedule Six special employees and creating and adding one new job classification and providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and an effective date. Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentals?
Yes, and OFR three is now approved on first reading. Um, is there any other, um, walk-ons or any, uh, announcements that need to be made at this time?
None from the city manager's office.
None from the city attorney's office? Okay. Any further business of the city commission? There being none, this meeting is now concluded. Thank you.
Wow.